Did he?
Yeah, I see him out and about periodically.
I like it when they, when they, uh. I love that. Yeah.
All right, it's six P M., so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Zamora.
Here.
Harmon.
Here.
Lutres.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Whitbeck.
Here.
All right, we have a full commission. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting on Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Commissioners, are there any conflict of interest declarations?
No.
Seeing none, moving on. There are no special presentations and no consent agenda, which will move us into the review of our proceedings. So, review our proceedings. So, we're gonna ask the commission if they have, if they can hold questions on the, on the application until the applicant has had a chance to present and or limit their questions to staff following the presentation to those they don't think the applicant will be able to answer in their own presentation. Also, since this one is not as large of an application, but we'll go ahead and just take turns from commissioner to commissioner to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to ask questions. So, our opening statement for this hearing is this is a regularly scheduled meeting for the Caldwell Planning and Zoning Commission. We serve in both a decision-making capacity and advisory capacity to the mayor and city council. There are two types of public hearings that this commission conducts. The first is a legislative hearing whereby we formulate recommendations on certain land use requests. Our recommendations are then forwarded to the city council to make decisions on the legislative manner, matter. The second type of hearing is a quasi judicial, judicial hearing, which involves the consideration of a land use request such as an annexation, rezon classification, or approval of a subdivision preliminary plan. The public hearing procedures as required by Idaho law are, Idaho code are as follows. Oral and written testimony will be accepted from those who have signed in to speak prior to the hearing being declared open. When providing testimony, please come up to the podium and state your name and address, which will be included into the record. Staff will first present a report regarding the application being considered, followed by public testimony, which begins with the applicant or the applicant's representative, who will present a summary of the request for no more than ten minutes. Testimony of those in support will be taken, followed by those in neutral, and finally by those in opposition to the request. All these testimonies will be limited to five minutes or less, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to provide a rebuttal. After the rebuttal testimonies, given the public testimony portion of the public hearing will be closed, and no new oral or written testimony will be allowed. So with that, we'll move on to, there's no old business to new business. So, action item, so I'm gonna declare this hearing open. Case number C P M twenty-three dash thirteen, Z O N twenty-three dash twelve. With that, staff report, please.
Good evening, good evening, Commissioners, Morgan B. S. Plannion Zoning. The application before you this evening is for the Lexington Sky Phase Two Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone Application. The parcel is currently city-owned. It is approximately zero point eight two acres. It is located eight hundred and twenty-five feet east of Thomas Jefferson Street and Snead Parkway. I mentioned that it is city-owned, although it is in the process of being sold to the applicant, who will be up here to present in a moment. It is for a Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment from Open Space to High Density Residential and a Rezone from C two Commercial to R three High Density Residential. It may look familiar to you. It did come before this body in July of twenty-three as a city staff-initiated application. And the commission and council, well, the commission recommended denial, and then the council denied it because there was questions by both bodies regarding what would potentially go on the site, and they felt like it would benefit from having a representative other than the city present it, someone who had an idea of how the site would be developed once it actually sold. So that is why it's familiar and why it is back before you this evening, as an applicant outside the city-led application in this case. Well, they can tell you more about it when they get up. The existing Comprehensive Plan designation for this parcel is Open Space. You can see that in the image on the right, the lime green. Open Space is likely designated as Open Space because it is immediately adjacent to a city park. And when it was owned, at some point in time, it was envisioned that the park would expand this way. We don't typically designate private property owners' land as Open Space. We don't have a corresponding zoning designation. We don't have a public or a Open Space zoning designation that that would zone to once it became zoned. In this case, it's actually zoned C two Commercial. You can see that image on the left. All the surrounding properties are zoned C two as well, or C three immediately to the north. Even the park immediately to the south is zoned Commercial, as I mentioned, because we don't have an Open Space. And at the time, we did not have a public zoning designation, if you remember this body recommended approval of a public zoning designation very recently. As a C two-zoned parcel, this parcel could develop tomorrow without coming before any deciding bodies. They could apply for a building permit and begin construction on a numerous variety of commercial projects from automotive sales, automotive rental lots, tire repair, tire sales, automotive repairs, gas station, convenience store, electronic sales, food bank, soup kitchen, a wide variety of C two projects. So even though it is designated as Open Space in the Comprehensive Plan, because that's not a zoning designation, that doesn't dictate what can be built on site today, and a wide variety of commercial uses could be constructed today. Immediately to the north of the site is the existing Lexington Sky multifamily residential project. It has eighty-four units, which has a density of twenty-three units per acre, right under the max for R three. This is zoned commercially, and the permits were pulled for it just a couple of years ago when we allowed multifamily in commercial zones. The code since changed. Immediately to the east of this parcel is Thomas Jefferson Charter School. Immediately south is the city park. To the west is an undeveloped parcel, and then slightly further to the west is Idaho Department of Commerce and Labor, as well as some light industrial and a little bit further to the west. These are some photos of the subject site, as well as the Lexington Sky Apartments looking north. This is before they were completed, being built. This photo was taken the last time this application came before you, so in July. So the parcel is designated as Open Space, as I mentioned, likely due to the park. That limits what could be developed on the site, which is why it is actually zoned commercial and could be developed as commercial currently. The school park and the high-density residential in the purple, and it mentioned that when we were looking at the zoning map, but you can see it in the bottom image, that dark purple that's going vertically is R three. So this parcel is only within three hundred and thirty feet of other high-density residentially zoned parcels, very close. The only parcel separating it is the school, and schools are directly permitted use in the R three zone. So it'd be a continuation of uses that were directly permitted in R three. And the R three could provide a buffer and transition between the commercial development to the west and then the high-density residential, followed by medium residential to the east. So I know there were some questions about why the city sold the property. We did some research. The property posed a maintenance challenge. Managing weeds and abatements on the parcel and addressing other site needs became increasingly difficult for city staff because the site was not used. There was a need to find improvements at the sporting fields immediately to the south, particularly concerning light upgrades. The city saw the potential revenue from the sale of this property as a means to support essential capital improvements at the adjacent field. As an infill property located in an urban renewal district, the city also felt a responsibility to see it developed. And the purpose of the Caldwell Urban Renewal District is not to leave land idle, but to actively encourage development in a manner that contributes to the city's tax base. And so for those reasons, the city council put this property up for auction to be sold. As I mentioned, no development proposal is taking place at this time. However, it is anticipated that this will continue as a second phase of the Lexington Sky Apartment Complex to the north. Based on a site plan that was provided by the applicant, they are anticipating being able to do twelve units on site. Before that could happen, the developer would still need to apply for a special use permit with the city, and that would be another land use application that would work through the process and have a public hearing and allow time for all adjacent property owners to comment. Utilities, landscaping, parking, access, all of those codes would be addressed and reviewed at the time development was proposed. Comments were sent to all agencies. Two comments were received. Comments were received from the fire district that provided general conditions of approval that'd be required at the time of development. And a letter of support was provided by the city's Economic Development Director. As he is unable to be here tonight to speak on the project, he submitted a letter of support. This was submitted late and only received today, so was not in the packet and has not been provided to the public. So I was going to read the letter into the record for any public here that weren't able to find it because it was provided today. The Caldwell Economic Development Department is delighted to learn about Lexington Sky LLC's consideration of another opportunity to develop within the city of Caldwell. We wholeheartedly support their efforts in contributing to the developing high-quality multifamily projects within our community. Given the pronounced housing shortage in Canyon County, addressing the scarcity is of paramount importance. To alleviate the housing shortage, it is crucial to focus on residential density in areas with access to robust utility infrastructure and efficient transportation systems. The identified parcel situated in the rapidly growing Sky Ranch Business Center qualifies as an infill development. This business park currently hosts sixty-five or more businesses, providing over twenty-five hundred jobs. The city has been dedicated to attracting these businesses to our community, and concurrently, we are actively working to facilitate the development of more high-quality residential projects in the surrounding area. The Lexington Sky Project strategic location offers excellent access to jobs, services, highway twenty-two six. Looking beyond Sky Ranch, we anticipate the continued growth of North Ranch and adjacent properties along the highway, including the upcoming four-story St. Alphonsus Health Complex. Recognizing the need for multifamily housing to support our current and future workforce, the Economic Development Department readily endorses and highly recommends the approval of the Lexington Sky Project. These initiatives will contribute to expanding residential diversity within the Treasure Valley, addressing the pressing housing needs in the Caldwell region. The Caldwell Economic Development Department looks forward to contributing or to collaborating with Lexington Sky to bring this impactful project to fruition in our community. There was also several letters of opposition that were received from the public, and every single one of those was provided in your packet. We did not receive any late comment from the public. Staff finds that the proposed request is in compliance with city code, provided the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is approved and aligns with seven policies within the plan regarding providing a variety of housing types and providing housing where infrastructure already exists. Staff recommends that if the project is approved, the request is subject to the conditions as specified in the findings of fact document. That is everything I have for you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the applicant's presentation. Mr. Carlson. Say your name and address into the record, and you'll have up to ten minutes.
Great, thank you. Name, Solon Carlson. Address is one hundred North Main Street, Suite two hundred, Boise, Idaho, A three seven oh two. Thank you very much for, for being here and hearing this application tonight. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background. I actually graduated from College of Idaho and was very excited to come back to Caldwell a few years ago and initiate Lexington Sky, which is directly across the street from this proposed site. With that, we were able to collaborate with the city and provide eighty-four units, which we got our final occupancy permit in September of last year and are currently leasing that up. We found through the leasing process that there's definitely a lot of demand and need for additional housing. My development partners team are, have been developing in the valley for a number of years. So we also bring a lot of experience to this proposed project. Oh, sorry, I just. This one? Pardon me. And so basically, as staff kind of pointed out, that's kind of the subject parcel that we're looking at. Lexington Sky is directly to the north. And when you kind of look at a lot of, I kind of did a little bit of research, kind of looked at Caldwell and looked at a lot of the schools in Caldwell. And realistically, a lot of it's surrounded by R three. We have multifamily, we have single family. And so really, it's kind of an ideal land use for that site. One of the other exciting aspects that I like is it, it gives us the ability to build on what we've already added to the community and be able to, to not only leverage those, leverage those amenities that we've currently built, but also provide additional amenities for our community. It's, this lot is not a primary commercial lot. It's not on the major artery. And really, it is, I mean, it's the quintessential infill lot. It's also compromised by power lines that run through, which make it challenging on the commercial side. So. And then one of the things kind of when we held our, our neighborhood meeting, really, the only, the opposition and the concern that was expressed from the school is really being located right next to the school and obviously, you know, the, the concern for increase in traffic. We are really only talking twelve units, and so that increase shouldn't be very significant, if at all. A lot of, a lot of our members of our community are, obviously are gone from, you know, probably before school starts at eight o'clock in the morning to, you know, they return well after it gets out, which is, I think, three-thirty or three o'clock. And, you know, another, another really good thing, it's a very, it's, it's similar, but much smaller footprint to another multifamily project that is actually currently under construction next to Heritage Community Charter School on the corner of Eustick and Indiana, which kind of further illustrates the, really, the need and the collaboration between multifamily and your schools. So. This is kind of pictures that are more recent of Lexington Sky and really kind of showing, illustrating a lot of the news we already have on, on site and what we'll be able to use, you know, with this new project that will, you know, our Phase Two. And really just continuing that continuity, continuity to the existing eighty-four units and, and kind of creating, enhancing that whole corridor, that area with, with a really nice project. This is the proposed kind of site, and so is this really a concept at this point? But what we really tried to do with this, you can kind of see it maybe a little hard, but power lines are right there that runs through the front of it. And so what we tried to do is orient the ingress egress, so the entrance kind of away from the school, and then also set that twelve-plex, you know, far to the, to the west as we possibly can. And then obviously provide plenty of parking on site, so we're not even overflowing on the street. We, we have a twelve-plex that is part of the existing Lexington Sky, and that's a picture of it, and that would be what we would bring to the site. You know, in, in closing, what I'd say, the proposed zoning changes and comprehensive plan amendment will add, you know, several benefits. Increased housing to support the growing needs of the community right now. And in Sky Ranch, there's twenty-five hundred jobs that have been created. I want to say a couple of years ago, when we were looking, it was, I think, in the neighborhood of fifteen or sixteen hundred jobs. So that's staggering growth. And then if you go across twenty-twenty-six and you look at, at North Ranch, there's another thousand jobs that have been created over the last couple of years. And so really, this is, this is another illustration of how much need there is for housing and having an opportunity to have that housing so close to, to work, where not only are we talking being able to walk, to ride your bicycle, I mean, other forms of transportation other than a vehicle. You know, we, we also are owner-operator, so we're in this for the long haul. We believe in strong community ties and really working, collaborating with everybody around us. And another thing that was already pointed out is increase in tax revenue. Will contribute and, you know, obviously give back through future, for future years through taxation and, you know, other forms. Sorry, I'm getting a little caught in the mouth. And I guess kind of in closing, just looking, you know, what we really try to do is build a product, a, a building that is not only energy efficient, but we also keep in mind we have E V charging stations. We'd add more in another E V charging station or two at this site for that future projected use. We already have one resident at Lexington Sky that's actually already using it, which is really exciting. And, you know, we, we want to contribute to Caldwell with aesthetic housing, so something that blends, looks nice, and, and really, really kind of elevates everything. You know, I think Caldwell's done a fantastic job, and we're excited to continue to partner with Caldwell and move forward. So, thank you for your time.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so at this time, Mr. Carlson, if you're open for questions, I'll open it to the Commissioners for the applicant. We're gonna just kind of go in order this time. We're trying to, a new process from last meeting. So do you wanna?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Sean, or excuse me, Commissioner Harmon.
I just have one, and it's, so will the amenities, it's the one across the street, be able to be used by this twelve-plex? Like, it looks like the gym and different things.
Absolutely, a hundred percent. That's, and sorry, I didn't make that clear, but yes.
No, I didn't know if you did or not. I might not have heard it, but, okay, okay, perfect, thanks.
Thank you. I'll, actually, one of my questions to follow up to that, so what are the amenities that Phase One, that will be available to this potential development that would be available to them? So what, like, so the gym, what else is there?
Oh, so what, what are the amenities in Phase?
In Phase One, correct.
Sure. So amenities, obviously, you have a gym, we have a clubhouse, we have a barbecue area, community barbecue area, we have a tot lot, and then we also have a dog park, enclosed dog park with a wash station. We have garages for.
We have garages for residents, and so those, those are our primary open space.
And I, we're there, and I know this isn't a development, but I'm just curious as if thinking had were this to be approved, are there sidewalks that are going to be connecting this phase to that phase, so that there's ease of, of walking over to Phase 1 if I lived in Phase 2?
There are, there are sidewalks, I believe, on both sides. We'd obviously have to do some cuts into those sidewalks and then, you know, kind of repair it. Right on the corner of Thomas Jefferson and Adam Smith, that's kind of the crosswalk right there, and it, it would flow beautifully into this parcel.
I have, I think, just one more question right now. There was a picture of, kind of, that overview picture of, of the property. Remind me, what's directly behind it, not on the park side, but on the other side?
Yeah, let me go. Directly...
Yeah, so that, kind of, that light brown color, that's to the north?
Oh, that, that is Lexington Sky, right now.
It's already built out.
It's already built out, so that, that's kind of an older picture.
Okay.
Older satellite.
Okay.
But you can kind of see where it is, says Lexington Sky.
Okay.
So that is, that whole section right there it is.
All right. Commissioner Butros?
I have no questions. No questions, yeah.
No question, okay. Commissioner Larson? Okay. All right, thank you. I do have just one follow-up question for staff, though. So schools, what zone can schools be developed in? So you commented that's allowable in R3, or no, excuse me, C2. I, I feel like, and I don't have the, the guide in front of me, but schools are allowable multiple zoning areas, is that true?
That is true. I was just going to pull it up so I could get them all, and of course, I had closed the code out when I sat down. So schools, public schools are directly permitted in all residential districts, and they are special, a special use permit required in all commercial districts, the light industrial, hospital district, and the college district.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners at this point? Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I have questions for staff. Are we doing staff questions now?
Yep.
Okay. Couple of questions. So, I think last time, and I don't want to sound like someone's beaten on the same drum, we said that there was 20,000 houses that were needed for the valley, and then I believe that we were told that there's approximately 9,000 units that are being developed, not given a timeframe, but in the next couple of years. At what point is there housing shortage and there's no longer housing shortage? Because 9,000 for the entire valley, which includes Ada County and Meridian, which both have tremendous growth, because, you know, in and out. So what, at what point are we no longer in the, hey, we don't have houses too, now we're kind of leveling out, or we have too many? How are we making that assessment? Because if we make 9,000 approximately half of all for the whole valley, seems like a lot, so I'm just trying to give a estimate for, for me to make a clear decision here.
Right. In some meetings I've had with Compass, so that is our community planning organization for Southwest Idaho, I, the latest numbers I have are that Caldwell specifically is still short, probably 1,100 units.
In the next year, right now, or I guess, what is that metric point looking at? Do you know? Sorry.
It is hard, I, I understand your point, so... Right, so if today we say we're 1,100 short, but we have 1,100 homes that are going to be built over the next five years. But the problem is, is we continue to have people inflow to our community, right? We have new families coming in constantly, students, families expanding. From everything that I'm getting from every organization that I work with, we are still very much in a housing shortage.
Okay.
Across the valley.
Okay, then I have another question, Chair. So I, I want clarification on the parks, because this is near a park, and I don't know why we sold it, because the, from the code, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it says we need 6.5 acres for every 1,000 residence. And so I don't know why we sold this, if, I don't think I haven't seen anything, and they can correct me if I'm wrong. I haven't seen anything related to any new parks, and if we've developed 9,000 homes, that would be 6.5 times 9 acres of parks. So I guess I'm trying to clarify why we would have sold this when that whole lot may have been bought by the city and used and expand to expand on that park portion. Didn't make clarity to me in my mind, I guess I wanted to clarify, because this looks like that should be something we could have thought about doing for the parks that needed to have growth.
Sure. So there is currently underway, so the city has an existing parks master plan, however, there's currently underway a revision to the master plan happening right now that the Parks and Rec Department is doing. And I would very much encourage you guys to be involved if you haven't already been. These, this plan will help set like a capital improvement plan for parks, identifying where we need the parks, where we need the acreage. We don't necessarily need them in the same places we've had them historically, right? There might be an existing park here, but in some section of town that's been rapidly expanding, we have no parks there. And so the city really does require a study to figure out where these parks should be located, how many acres should be located where. And I think that this, it did say something like, what did you say, six?
6.5 acres per thousand.
6.5 acres per thousand?
Residents.
Residents, yeah, so that was the level of service that the city adopted. So potentially, we had more than that, and we knew we were growing, and we were trying to figure out where the balance is, and we could be under. So for us to collect park impact fees, we have to have a level of service, and we have to have a capital, capital improvement plan for parks, knowing where we want these parks and what the amenities are going to be to be able to do them. And I haven't been super invested in either of these plans or processes in the past, but it's very likely that they've said, okay, we have as much park as we need here, and we need to be focusing on putting parks where we don't have them, not just expanding the existing parks.
Okay. I think, and then, I, I don't think you can answer this, but I'm going to ask it anyways, Chair, if I may, one last question. I, I didn't think we could bring it up to our attention, but do we know, a bunch of people brought up concerns about police issues and vandalism and such. Did anyone reach out to the police department and verify? I wanted to ask a policeman to pull reports, but I didn't have time. Do we know how much validity to these statements are if they're being embellished? Not, I, I want to believe these people, I just want to know how much more than what they're actually seeing is happening, or if it's just what they're seeing.
The only outreach to the police department that was provided was the typical agency distribution memo, saying that there was a land use application happening here. And so it was provided to the police department. I get comments back from the police department on occasion, depending on the project. If they see a particular project, and they think that there's something that we need to know, they comment. In this case, I did not receive any comments.
Okay, okay. I, I think those are my questions, thanks, Chair. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff at the moment? If not, thank you, we'll move on to the rest of the public members. Nobody signed up, no more, no one else signed up in favor or neutral. A couple signed up to speak in opposition, so ask Ms. Endicott to come up. Say your name and address into the record, and you have up to, no more than five minutes, please.
I'm Jody Endicott. My home address is 6916 Map Rock Road in Caldwell. I'm the administrator at Thomas Jefferson Charter School, located at 1209 Adam Smith Avenue. We own the land on both sides of the parcel that's under consideration tonight. Thomas Jefferson Charter School does not support amending the land use map from open space to high-density residential. Comprehensive plan land use map currently designates the .82 acres as open space and is zoned as C2 community commercial. The City of Caldwell Code of Ordinance zoning definitions state the purpose of the community commercial zone is to provide areas that establish distinct zones regulated to fulfill general shopping, retail, and professional needs. The request rezone asks this be changed to R3 high-density residential. The City of Caldwell Code of Ordinance zoning definitions state the intention of this zoning is to provide transition or buffer areas between commercial use and lower-intensive use, and to provide places for higher-density uses in selected places of the city's neighborhoods. There are already several apartment buildings and very few commercial spaces in this particular portion of the neighborhood. Chapter 3 of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Caldwell addresses school facilities and transportation. On page 24 within this chapter, under the Public Facilities Plan, it is stated that placing a school near a major roadway would jeopardize the safety of students walking to school. Conversely, placing a school on a local or residential street would congest traffic. Thomas Jefferson Charter School was in a mostly open space area when first built in 2006 within the C2 zoning and is now in a high-density residential area due to rezoning and growth around us, even though the land use designation map still shows this area as commercial and service. The Comprehensive Plan is correct that the safety of our students is a concern due to the increased traffic and congestion. We feel adding more high-density residential to the area will exacerbate this problem. We've done our best to mitigate these concerns by adding fences and gates to increase security on our playgrounds and sidewalks, adding magnetic door locks to the entrances to increase security and safety of our students, adding additional no trespassing signs, adding additional exterior lighting for student safety as well as identify trespassing disturbances and/or damages, adding cameras to our exterior to assist with identifying after-hour trespassing disturbances, damages, and hiring an SRO to assist with safety and security. Even with the added security features, we are finding dog feces, vape cartridges, cigarette butts, litter, displaced landscaping, et cetera, on our playground and fields from potential folks in the neighborhood, their apartments and housing, of course, both in the area, trespassing to use our playground as a playground, a dog park, et cetera. This is not good for our students' physical safety and health, as well as peace of mind for our students and parents. At our board meeting last night, Mr. Carlson met with the board and asked if the board would consider or be interested in trading a portion of that parcel to the, the other section discussed tonight. The board is not interested in this proposal. In conclusion, Thomas Jefferson Charter School is asking the commission not approve this comprehensive plan adjustment nor the rezone. We ask this for the health and safety of our school's students, staff, parents, and patrons.
Thank you, Ms. Endicott.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Charter, your, your student enrollment, are you, most, many charters are on our lottery, so do you, are you on a waitlist? Are you typically at full capacity?
Yes, lottery, waitlist. Currently, we are K-12, 385 students.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? So, Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, Chair, question. So how many incidences have you guys called the police for stuff?
When that was asked earlier, I thought I need to start keeping track of that. I can tell you, day before yesterday, in the evening, we had a lot of chalk paint or chalk, chalk drawing. We have some landscaping rocks that are bigger rocks, those were brought out, out by our basketball court. And we recently have had, we found a vape out in the playground, the kids brought it to me, so then I had to go into the class and talk with the children about, don't touch anything like that, please all go wash your hands. And I went, called all the parents, and let them know that they had touched this object, and that I had had their, had them wash their hands. So just a lot of upkeep and extra safety and education for kids, the kids didn't know what it was, and they picked it up, because it looked like kind of a fruity-colored whiteout container. A lot of the time, I can't tell that that's what they are, but it was on the playground next to our fencing on our side of the playground, so, yeah.
And then I have another question, Chair. So the property to the west, those are yours from this one, is what you are clarifying?
To the west, yes.
On the map, to the west, all the way up to that development next to Smeed?
Yes, between the Department of Labor and this parcel that you're discussing, yeah, there's three acres there, I think?
So this isn't, this is just a question, but if the city were to sell you that property instead of the person who's applicant, making the application today, would you guys buy it to develop all of that, or do you guys have funding to do such a thing?
I can't speak for the board, but I, they would be interested in being considered for purchase of the piece.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I think that's it, thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Endicott.
Thank you.
And we have one more person signed up in opposition, can't, sorry, can't read the last name, the first name is Danielle. Come on up, please, say your full name in the, into the mic with your address.
My name is Danielle Leininger, it's L-E-I-N-G-E-R. My home address, it's Nampa address, but I'm on Caldwell Utilities, I'm in Caldwell, I promise. It is 17874 Mountain Springs Avenue, Nampa, Idaho, 83687.
Thank you, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you. So again, my name is Danielle Leininger, I am a native Idahoan, born and raised. I have owned my own home in Caldwell since 2011. My husband and I are also Caldwell business owners and parents to four children, three of which are enrolled in Thomas Jefferson Charter School. During our time at Thomas Jefferson, we have experienced the construction of over 140 apartment units bordering our children's school. I have the following infrastructure and safety concerns regarding Lexington Partners' request to amend the land use to high-density residential and rezone to R3 in order to construct an apartment complex. I wanted to give you a general idea of what school drop-off and pickup looks like in this area. In the morning and afternoon, Thomas Jefferson Street is lined with vehicles on each side of the roadway. The roadway becomes very narrow because of this. There are also large buses, teachers, students, and parents dropping children off using Thomas Jefferson Street. I personally drive up Thomas Jefferson Street and turn right at the school in order to enter the parking lot and walk my children to class. There are also two crosswalks that are utilized by student, parent, and teacher pedestrians at the corner of Thomas Jefferson Street and Adam Smith Avenue. Between vehicle traffic and pedestrians, this is a very compact and busy area. The road is not wide enough, and the proposed R3 designation on the subject parcel's location on the corner will only make matters more difficult when it comes to navigating this area around the school. In a meeting with Lexington Partners, they advised that they would be providing parking for the intended residents of the proposed apartment complex. However, it is inherent with any residential community, apartments or otherwise, that friends, family, et cetera, park outside of the parking lot. Visitors to the apartment not utilizing the parking lot would then be parking on Thomas Jefferson Street or in the Thomas Jefferson Charter School's parking lot. These additional cars only add to the congestion and safety issues for the school. The other issue, even in a perfect world where all residents, family, and friends are utilizing the parking lot, these cars have to get in and out somehow. The only options I see to access the proposed apartment complex are via Thomas Jefferson Street or via the Thomas Jefferson Charter School parking lot, which it appears that's the plan based on the images from earlier. Neither of these options are ideal, and again, only add traffic, safety, and access issues to an already busy area. The proposed apartments are not a continuation of the existing apartments, they are an afterthought. It should also be noted that at this meeting with Lexington Partners, they advised that the Lexington Sky Apartments are currently across the street from the subject parcel, wherein there are nearly 84 apartments, were at nearly 50% capacity at the time of the meeting. That apartment complex alone, once full, is going to add more than, more pedestrian and vehicle traffic as is, this is more than just 12 units. I am concerned that the additional traffic already inherent with the existing apartments and the traffic to be added once they become fully occupied will interfere with the safety of students attending Thomas Jefferson, let alone additional apartment units if the request for rezoning is allowed. I'm also concerned about the increase in crime and vandalism in areas where the population increases so drastically. I understand that growth is inevitable and that we must learn to evolve with the constant changes that are occurring around us, however, this parcel is not suited for high-density residential or an R3 zone designation. A simple commercial designation would be much more suited for this parcel. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, at this time, no one else has signed up, so we'll return it back to the applicant for a closing rebuttal.
So I guess, in closing, well, first off, kind of, to address some of the, the reports on vandalism, et cetera, we have a security system in place, so we have cameras throughout our entire project with ability, and we've already communicated to the school that we're more than happy to work with them if indeed it is somebody from our community. Because at the end of the day, it, it is a community, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to prevent, limit that type of vandalism. We also really tried to keep, you know, we, we tried to anchor our, our residents with all the amenities, so when they come home, they have everything on-site, and they don't need to go over to Thomas Jefferson to use a playground or walk through a field, et cetera. So, so really, on that, we were kind of, we were really trying to collaborate. The other thing, Thomas Jefferson was very gracious last night to allow me to kind of talk to them, and an idea I had to kind of alleviate their concern of, of this parcel right next to the school was doing a simple land swap, kind of similar parcel right out on the west side, which would take us completely away from the school, and that also give them good continuity from the school going west, where they could potentially develop that into a gymnasium, I think is what they put on the application when they bought that three acres, or whatever they, they kind of have. And so I thought that would be, you know, a, a good compromise, and, you know, we'd be happy to, to work with them to do the lot split and do that land swap. You know, and then as far as, as traffic is concerned, I, I had one of my manager who's on, on-site kind of take a look and, and see what the impact, if any. And so she, she went out there today to kind of look at it, and, and truly, the impact on the public roadways are the, the parents picking up their, their schoolchildren or kind of... the parents picking up their, their schoolchildren or, or kind of dropping them off, and not really our residents. If you look at our current, uh, project, basically our entrances are well away from the school. And so really, we, our residents don't really impact that at all. We actually ended up having one of the parents kind of cut through our parking lot today, um, to kind of bypass some of the congestion from, I guess, the school on Adam Smith. But, um, so anyways, I, I think we, you know, as far as impact, I don't really think we're going to be that impactful. Um, you know, I think realistically, if you want to kind of look at a similar comparison, it's kind of what I mentioned already at the Heritage Community, uh, School, Charter School, with 160 units. I would say if you kind of compare 12 units to 160 units, there, there's kind of a drastic difference, and that's contiguous to that project. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Was there any final questions from commissioners?
I, I had a question for staff, but not for the applicant.
Go ahead.
One last question. Uh, all these roadways are public, right? None of these are private? The Charter School doesn't own any part of that Adam Smith?
No, that's correct.
It's all public?
All public.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, um, I would entertain a motion to close public testimony.
So moved.
That was a motion for Commissioner Larson.
Second.
Right, second for Commissioner Harmon, I think. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So now, um, have closed public testimony. It's time for us commissioners to deliberate.
Now I'm ready to talk.
All right, Commissioner Buttros?
When we heard this application last year, it was denied because it stuck up like a sore thumb in the middle of an empty field. I, at that time, I stated that a commercial development on this lot would be welcome. Unfortunately, what has come back to us is exactly the same plan that we denied and that the city council subsequently denied. I don't see a reason why we would need to revisit our decision. In addition to that, statements were made regarding critical need for housing. When we talk about the share that Caldwell has borne of all the new housing in the Treasure Valley, Caldwell has done its part, and adding 12 units does not do anything material to help that problem if indeed there is a problem. In addition to that, residential properties do not generate sufficient property tax to pay for themselves. Businesses are required. We have a real business shortage in this city, and, uh, taking something that I understand that we cannot leave the open space designation, because it's really a non-designation, but, uh, rezoning this, I, I don't think the, the commission, Morgan, you can correct me, I don't think the commission can initiate a, such a rezone, but I would encourage somebody to come back before this commission with a commercial rezone for this property, and that, I think, would meet with approval. There is also the issue of, the city council changed the code a couple of years ago, so that multifamily housing was no longer allowed in a C2 zone. There was a reason for that. I don't know, I, I didn't want to ask you that question in case you didn't have the answer at hand. However, clearly, they did not intend for multifamily housing to be i- in a location like this. So we have to bend ourselves into pretzels in order to rework the, the, uh, comprehensive plan and the zoning in order to make something like this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Larson?
Chair, sorry to take up so much everybody's time. Um, yeah, I, I really think it would be good for commercial, or for a park, or theoretically, I don't want to take Rob from Peter to give the poll, but the, for the school, but I don't think that, uh, a residential looks like the best future plan. And last time we shot it down, I was of your mindset of it's, the comprehensive plan map haven't been finalized as well, and these need clearer direction for us to make a decision, because even some commercial, I don't think would be good in this spot, but some commercial I think would be great. So I feel like it's, uh, H is not a good decision at this time for residential to go in that specific location.
Thank you. Other comment? Uh, oh, Commissioner Whitbeck?
Just in going back to the project itself, I understand, if I understand this right, the only access to Lexington Sky Phase One would be to cross Thomas Jefferson Street, both traffic or, or pedestrian. So there's actually no, no connection or no access from one part to the other without crossing Thomas Jefferson. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
Not really a question, just a comment.
Thank you. And that's part of the deliberation. Uh, Commissioner Harmon, want to add anything?
I don't know, I'm struggling with this one. Because I do agree, I, I think it's kind of, 12 units doesn't do a whole lot. I agree with that. The only thing that I would say that could work would be that land swap thing and put it at the other end. But I still not sure that the comprehensive plan even shows that, you know, right now. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm struggling with it.
Thank you.
I'd love to see a solution where the school was able to purchase the property and then do it as one thing, but that's really not on the table for us.
Yeah. I, I guess my, my stance with this is, um, kind of two-pronged. One is, if we look at the actual ask, the ask is to change this piece, open space to R3, our, um, we, typically there's a transition, although I, I know part of it is, I think it's a 330, um, yards away from, from the nearest R3 zoning, but that, that's not a transition, right? That, that stuff in the middle doesn't allow for an appropriate transition. I think that's important for us when we think about rezoning, that, that there's a natural transition. It is an awkward space, right? It's an infill and, um, but jumping from one zone to an R3, that's a, that, without the appropriate transition is a challenge for me. Um, so that was one thing. And I, um, I agree, I remember the conversations around changing from multifamily house, housing units in commercial was around kind of safety and stuff, that I was, um, I believe I was, you know, I, it, the, the conversation was occurring, um, when I was on the commission at that time, and so, uh, I guess I'm with it as it's presented, I, I'm a no vote for this.
I'm not even sure commercial works there either. I mean, to me, that, that brings way more traffic than just the few people that are out all day long working.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I, I think that brings a, a worse clientele, possibly.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what kind of commercial, because I know Valley View had garbanzos, and so, I mean, it depends on what, because some of them would be terrible for this spot. Some commercials would be terrible, and they have the power line situation. So it's, I, I think it is very difficult, this, which is why we, last time we said no, because the comprehensive plan needs to give us direction on what to do.
I agree.
And, yeah, it feels like commercial's a great option. Um, it's just specifying what of the hundreds of options for commercials is really hard.
I agree.
Commissioner Buttros?
If there's no further discussion, are we ready to make a motion? I'll, I'll be happy to do that.
I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Okay. So, um, I, I'll move for denial. So I think I start with, based upon the testimony and evidence and record in this matter, and upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth herein, to hereby determine and move as follows: The request for a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment, and zoning map amendment for parcel R35287104A0 to high-density residential is recommended for denial because of incompatibility with the surrounding zoning.
Thank you. There was a motion for Commissioner Buttros. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Larson. Uh, roll call, please.
Buttros?
Uh, yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Whitbeck?
Yes.
Zamora?
Yes.
And with that, uh, that motion passes, and I'll go ahead and close this public, uh, hearing, and we'll move on with the agenda, which is adjournment. And so with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Larson made the motion.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Buttros. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.